A brief introduction.
Okay, we are recording, Josh.
Excellent.
Do you want me to do roll call?
Yes, please.
Okay, so let's do roll call. And so it's just a reminder, and today's session is a work session. There will be no decisions made today nor public comment taken. There is a small caveat to that public comment piece as we get to the point of taking Q and A based on the discussion. We do ask the individuals who might be interested in asking a question, do so via the Q and A feature on your screen. And please do it in the Q and A feature versus the chat as we can actually preserve the Q and A in the recording and we lose, we lose the chat functionality. So if you've got a question, please submit it on Q and A, but just as a reminder, this is a work session for the Wyoming Business Council Board of Directors. Okay, let's go ahead and do a quick roll call. Mr. Aaron's.
I'm here.
Mr. Brown. Mr. Coyne. Ms. DeBoer. Ms. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Canyon.
Here.
Mr. Kinsler. Mr. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Law.
I'm here.
Ms. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Smith. Ms. Thayer. And Ms. Tomasi.
I'm here, Amy.
So, Madam Co-Chair, that gives you seven board members. And so you do have Cora.
Perfect. Thanks, Amy. So thanks, everybody for joining us today. So we're on our third third series workshop series or our third workshop of the series. That's what I should say. Totally functioning on all cylinders. In which we're talking about venture capital. So we have a whole series of really big topics that are coming before the board this year. Venture capital being the first of a couple of them. So and we've done two previous workshops, one where we sat down and talked to some companies. The second, we talked with individuals that were focused on either support type of roles. So Matt Kaufman is a lawyer. And Alex and man, I'm really good at butchering his last name, but Josh has it down pat.
Orum Sev.
Thank you. And his role as as a mentor to many companies across Wyoming. And then today's venture capital workshop, we're talking from the perspective of VC funders. And so we're really, we're going to be talking with with Jared and Philip today. And really hearing from from their perspective. What would venture capital funding looks like in Wyoming, the pros, the cons, things that they've learned, things that we should be keeping in mind as we're going down this path, and especially in our conversations of partnering with entities in terms of funding funds and those types of things that we should be thinking about as we're rolling out our program and our rules. So, you know, really excited to be having these conversations and really today is about I mean, listening, but more importantly, having a really good dialogue and discussion that gets formed across the board as well as all of those who have joined outside of the board. So with no further ado, I'm going to go ahead and kick it off to Josh and then we'll jump in and talk with Jared and Philip.
Cool. Well, thank you, Adam Co-Chair. I appreciate the intro and I appreciate everyone's time today because as as our co-chair mentioned, we really want to make sure that the information about some of the newer things that are happening at the Business Council gets spread out far and wide and that we begin a dialogue with some folks around the state that have this expertise. And so as as she mentioned, this is the third of our series. In the first series or in the first episode, if you will, we talked a little bit about venture, the venture ecosystem. And maybe we should just call it the investment ecosystem in entrepreneurial companies as well as SSBCI, which is the State Small Business Credit Initiative. And and what I'd like to do before we have the panel with Philip and Jared, I'd like to just walk through a few slides briefly to reintroduce or to introduce people to sort of the concepts that we're going to be talking today. And I think what it does is it gives us a good primer into what what some of the terms are and how we do help in the state as well as how we would like to help in the state as we move forward. And really try to develop that entrepreneurial ecosystem, which we know is not just about money. It's it's about a bunch of things. And so that's why we're covering all these different angles. So I'm going to attempt to share my screen and and do just that. So if you'll give me a moment to do that, we'll go ahead and share my screen. And so you should see a slide that says venture capital on it. And what we want to do is really just kind of take a look at the ecosystem throughout the state. And there are, as we mentioned, it's not just about an entrepreneur with an idea and a bunch of money. There are a lot of different factors at play within the entrepreneurial ecosystem. And I would say that right now we have a number of the elements in place, however, they may not always be as fluid or as as working together as they could be. And that's something that we're addressing. And it's something that Bert, our Investments Director, when he started as the Entrepreneurial Services Manager, he really started to get his arms around all of the elements throughout the state that can really help an entrepreneur from idea to commercialization and maybe even exit or success there. But there are a lot of things at play. I won't go into all of them, but I think it's important to know that it's not just an idea and money that make this happen. And so we like to think of things in sort of this funnel. And and I really like this idea because it starts to show the the stages that an entrepreneur might go through when they think about their their idea and how to make it happen and really turn it into a viable business. The the different levels here correspond to the maybe the number of of ideas or businesses that are in each of those funnels, what the steps are to get to that next level. And then also where the the idea of money and equity kind of come into the picture and the in the various elements throughout the state where those are available. And so if you just think about it from the very beginning, you know, those local startup challenges and maybe they're the university challenges, maybe they're local challenges that go on. And then jumping down into that next one where you might actually go into a regional startup pitch. And there are a number of those throughout the state as well. Impact 307 does does a number of those. Those are areas where you're going to get some, maybe you're going to get some money, but it's not going to be in exchange for any equity or anything like that. It's to really push your your idea along and get you really sort of centered on, is this a viable idea? Or do I need to pivot and things like that? As you continue to go down, you maybe make a few pivots and you use up some of that money from the startup. You might look at what what is the next area where we can where we can maybe help out? And we do that with SBIR. I'm in the past, we've had Kickstarter grants, but we do a number of programs that really kind of help people. And again, don't dilute their their portion of the company at that point. But then in the next two stages, those are areas where equity may be taken and equity is 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 available or is perhaps utilized where the investment is made in a company and equity is taken. And so as we start to look at this, we wanted to, those are areas that we don't have, we really don't have as a state tools to do that. But we feel like that's a really good area and that's where that State Small Business Credit Initiative could be utilized to assist in that in the investment for equity sake. These are, these are just some some illustrations to help everyone again, get centered around the different levels. And so I want you to take a look at this graph. It's actually not as complex as you might think. But if you think about on the on the horizontal axis, you have the different types of company from startup all the way out to IPO. So startup seed, angel, series A, B, and C, and then IPO. And what this is showing is sort of how the equity is diluted in each of these rounds, but how the value of the company also increases. And and I'm guessing that we'll hear a little bit about this from our panel today. But you know, when a company starts up or they're even in the seed rounds, the founders have a huge or all of the of the company in under their control. And over time with investment, that changes. And so a lot of times there's a challenge where people are like, I don't want to give up any, any of my equity, but at the same time I want to grow. And this kind of shows that balance and how do it achieve that over time? This is a kind of another another graphic to again, to show the different lifecycle stages of a business and the the various amounts of revenue and valuation that might go into it and where you would be in a funding stage and and just helping everyone understand the various stages that a company goes through as they're looking to start up and then become a little bit more mature, develop those products and and really kind of get to a level where they're they're mature. Now, one thing, one thing I think a lot of people think about is, well, you know, are we trying to do some sort of high growth thing where I can exit this company and make a bunch of money? And or am I going to try to build a company that is is going to maybe, maybe not take on as many investors, but we're going to build a company that's that's lasting and and stays with the current ownership structure for a long period of time? And the answer is yes. Sure, there are, there are those areas of of, and I think we'll talk about these later, where where, you know, you get investors involved and many a times those investors want to make an exit and they want to make some money and go on and do some other things. Those can be really good for economic development because it distributes the wealth and and it creates more wealth for people in Wyoming, which ultimately those people that that we found this with the founders discussion early on, those are the people that when they they have success with one company, they tend to spur on two or three or four more companies. And I, and again, I think, you know, Jared Stack, one of our panelists today is a great example of that, who's somebody who has has taken this this and become, you know, a serial entrepreneur, really. So I think that's something that, yeah, we want high growth and exits, but we also want to have those those companies that are that are stable and sound and are lasting and not looking for that exit. So let me jump back up, sorry. Again, yet yet another really graphic to describe this, maybe it's it's what I like about this one the most is this idea of maturity. And so as you look at this and we take it from the left to the right, I want you to take a look at the idea of maturity and what that means from that that very early stage of idea and concept. And then walking them through through a minimum viable product, then taking a look at prototyping, making sure that there is a product market fit, continuing to understand, can we scale this effectively and efficiently? And then, you know, is is there a way to 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 move forward with that? And so I think that's what I like about this one a lot is to kind of help people understand the different funding mechanisms, but more than anything, the maturity of the company at that time. And this is just a little bit of a snapshot from the equity things that have been going on in Wyoming. I won't read through these 100% because I know we want to get to talking with with Jared and Philip. But I think it's important to understand that while there's not a ton of activity going on in Wyoming, I think that there's some really good growth and there's some things happening that that make a big. I think that we're we're kind of in a fun stage because we're at the beginning of a lot of these. And I think you've seen some hard work being done by the folks like Breakthrough 307 and Echelon Capital. And those are, those are just the beginnings of what can be. And so we'll go ahead and and kind of just, you know, think, think to to ourselves, hey, this is good to be in on the ground floor of some of this. And how can we help? And that's where that State Small Business Credit Initiative, I think, really fits in. And what we decided is that this is something that could be, it could be collateral support. It could be a number of things to help with with banking and banking businesses that maybe need some help. What we decided to do with the State Small Business Credit Initiative, because this is money from the federal government, we decided that the best way we could help our mission of, you know, creating a resilient economy in Wyoming was to really look at how do we fund entrepreneurs and how do we get the entrepreneurial ecosystem jumpstarted? And so we are utilizing the State Small Business Venture. Excuse me, the way to do that is is with funds and you can do direct investments. So we can do those early stage investments. We can, we can help out with with a number of things through this whole process. But we are going to be looking at funding funds and also directly funding organ or businesses that have that are passed kind of that seed through series B. Again, this is where this is where we feel like we can make the biggest investment in the in the economic resilience of Wyoming. And we see SSBCI as a way for us to really start to or help out developing that ecosystem that's already been started. There are a couple of things to to think about when we think about the funding funds and then venture direct, which would be directly investing in companies. Obviously, funding funds, we we are looking at how do we split this money up? So we think we're going to get about $58 million. That is not 100% certain yet. But we think we're at about $58 million of SSBCI that we need to deploy. I believe it's over the course of nine years. We are looking at funding funds on the venture fund side. So about 23 million of that would be funding funds. Obviously, the the beautiful thing about that is that you get to fund funds and utilize the expertise of fund managers and people who do this every day. We want to do that. And then we also want to be able to invest directly into businesses. But again, we would be accompanying others in those rounds and we would not be just doing those alone. We think we could fund somewhere between seven and nine funds and 12 to 16 investments in this. And again, it's a way for us to be able to take equity into these into these businesses. And and now, if there aren't any questions on all of that, I I really would like to 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 turn it over to a panel and and get to to get Philip and Jared on here. I'm going to stop sharing my screen and provide a a very brief introduction because I think what we'll do is we'll turn it over to both Jared and Philip to do their introductions, to provide a little bit of background. Then we'll have some questions for them about about their their roles and everything. But with us today, we have Jared Stack, who probably many of you know already. He is is founded some companies. He has been involved in a number of of sales of companies as well as, you know, some some pretty big things in in Wyoming as well as a classmate of mine in engineering way back in the day. He's he was much closer to the top of the class than I and and then we also have, we also have Philip Tryke, who's the Chief Investment Officer for the for the University of Wyoming Foundation. And so we're really lucky to have him. I think that just just as a way of a personal connection, we were both Rollins outlaw wrestlers at one point in our our life. So go outlaws. But Philip brings just an enormous amount of investment understanding and business understanding. And his class is among one of the favorites at the University of Wyoming. I hear from his students all the time. And so we're really lucky to have him and to share his experience as well as an understanding of how the University of Wyoming Foundation is making some of their investments in entrepreneurs as well. With that, I I think if it's okay with you, Jared, I'll have you start it out and talk a little bit about your background and a little bit about Breakthrough 307.
Sure. Thanks, Josh. And I think I know most of you, but there's a handful of you I don't. So I'll introduce myself a little bit. I am Jared Stack. I'm a native of Casper and graduated the University of Wyoming. Left, kind of did the traditional thing that a bunch of people in technology do. I left the state after after school, lived in Texas, lived in Boulder for a while, came back. I guess it's been about 15 years ago now. And ran a company called Firehole Technologies in Laramie. We built that company up, sold it in 2013 to Autodesk. And then I had a contract that I had to work for them for three years. So I lasted three years and a day. And and then kind of tried to figure out what I was going to do next with my life. And and that led me about a year later to to why I'm here today. Me and a friend of mine named Charles Walsh started something called Breakthrough 307, which at the time, and I think kind of still is the only like organized angel fund in Wyoming. And I'll give you a little bit of background, but then I kind of want to open this up for discussion. But I didn't want to talk a little bit about Breakthrough 307. So we started in 2017. It's got a little bit of a unique kind of structure. We're we're a member managed fund. So our first fund had 20 members and we all manage it as essentially as volunteers. And we get together, we we look, we look for companies to invest in, we make them investment decisions, we do due diligence, we do all of that kind of as a team. So we don't have a fund manager or anything like that. It also is, it's nice for the investors as well as for the for the companies we invest in because no one's, no one takes a carry or any of that kind of stuff on our fund that way. And then that's how we structured the first fund. We we deployed that over four years into about a dozen companies. I think it was 12 companies. So this hasn't really changed since then. We typically write a check around $250,000 is the check that Breakthrough 307, the fund writes to a company. And if you go back to kind of all of Josh's charts, we're on that left stage. So we're almost always the first money that's not from grandma into a company. So we're kind of, you know, the the names of like funding stages are kind of messed up now. So I don't even know what a series A investment is anymore, but like we're the first ones in. So we're seed or pre-seed or or angel or whatever you call that. We really found, and this is, you know, this goes back to my history at Firehole and some of my friends, Jason isn't isn't on here, but but one of your colleagues as well was involved in this in the early days. It was really, really hard 10 years ago for entrepreneurs in Wyoming to get risk capital. It's significant significantly easier now, but it's still kind of hard. So what we really want to do and what we set out to do with with Breakthrough 307 is we wanted to be the lead investor for Wyoming-based startups. And we really focus on like, we kind of call it technology-enabled startups. And we have a couple of little sectors that we kind of focus on just because our investors, you know, we have a handful of them that are doctors. So they really like the biomedical stuff. And there's some of us that are really into software. So we like that. We try to fund things that kind of make sense in Wyoming. So like outdoor recreation products and stuff like that, too. But our goal, and we still see this today, our goal is to be the first moneyhead, the one to be the lead investor for the first investment round to a Wyoming company. And that's something that it's really hard. And there's, you know, there's a bunch of angel funds are kind of all over this, all over the country. And we've done some some deals with the ones in Montana and we do the ones with in South Dakota. A lot. I'll talk about that here in a second. But there's kind of this unwritten like handshake of all the angel groups in the in the country that a lot of them would love to invest in a Wyoming company, but they want the Wyoming angels to lead the round. So that was a gap before we came along. There wasn't Wyoming angels to lead the round. So it was, it was really tough for them to even go and try to get angels from out of state to go invest in Wyoming companies because there wasn't someone to lead. And what it means by leading the round is well, you're the first one in. So you kind of give them the first stamp of approval. But you're the one who does does due diligence. And I think you've probably talked about that in one of the other calls. I won't get into that. But that's when you kind of really bring a company in and kick the tires really deeply on them to make sure there's nothing under the hood there that you don't want to invest in. And then you come out with what how we do it is we come out with a big due diligence report and then we can go take it to other people. It's much easier to get the second and the third investor than it is the first. So we like to be the first. Like I mentioned, so our checks are about $250,000. They are typically in a round of somewhere between, sometimes we're the only money. So sometimes it's a $200,000 round and we're the only money. More often than not, especially lately, it's around between half a million and a million. So that means maybe we invest in it, the fund to 250. Oftentimes, we have individual members of our fund that like a specific deal. So they come in as well for, hey, I want another 50 grand and I want another 50 grand. So maybe we can get together three or 400,000 with us, but then we need to go find someone else to fill the rest of that $750,000. And that's something that, you know, we were really excited about some of the stuff you're doing because that helps us, you know, go get the the rest of that potential, potential if the estate could come in and help us with that. We have had pretty good luck syndicating is the word we use with the Black Hills Angels up in Rapid City. So we've done probably more than half of our deals we've done with them. So if it's a Wyoming deal, maybe we'll lead it, we'll put 250,000 in and they'll put 100,000 in to a Wyoming deal. And then then we kind of reciprocate. So the South Dakota deals, maybe they'll put 250 in and we'll put it, we'll put 100,000 in. We've done it, we've done that as well with, there's a group down in Phoenix called the Canyon Angels we've worked with once. There's a group called the Frontier Angels up in Montana that we've worked with a couple of times. And one over in Boise that we've worked, we've worked with once to to kind of figure out how you put that big round together. And when I look at my struggles or where I think you guys can help us, you know, that's it, right? You know, that that's definitely one of them is like, okay, so we have this company, then you'd have a million bucks, we can give them half of that. How do we go do that? Right now, it's really, really kind of guerrilla. We got to kind of make some phone calls and calls of people. Maybe we can, you know, take them on a tour go meet some people in Jackson or some people that in Cheyenne, maybe go down to Denver and it's a, it's a big effort. And I think Heather and Mike were the first panelists, right? In the first thing. So they've both been through this, Mike, a couple of times. And and it's it's hard to go do that. So that's something I think I'm kind of excited about to go help that you guys could potentially go go help us with. And there's some other things, too. You know, one of the things that that we struggle with is, you know, is finding deals that really fit what we're going for. And that's probably worth kind of talking, talking about a little bit, too. You know, we don't fund just an idea. You kind of have to have a prototype or a minimum viable product, we we call it. And there are some stuff in the state, you know, like like the startup challenges and impact 307 that does a pretty good job of getting you from idea to something, right? But that gap from like the that little, you know, maybe you get 10 grand at a startup challenge to where you have a product and you've talked to some customers. That's a pretty big gap that we're not going to fill as a fund and they don't, there's not really anything there that, you know, you know, we kind of did that experiment a few years ago with the Kickstarter grants that kind of filled that. And when I look back, you know, we've got 15 investments now, I think like five of them were from that era of a year where we had those Kickstarter grants in the in the state. So I think that's kind of an interesting data point that, you know, that did get them, kind of got them out of the garage, got them to a product. And then we followed on funding with them later, you know, and and one of, well, one of them is Mike and and Teton, you know, that's one of our exits that that we've gotten investment money back on one of our investments. They were one of those Kickstarts. So there, there's definitely kind of a gap there that that I would, I'm hoping someone can help us fill. Phil might talk about, Philip might talk about this later, but there's also a gap. And we see this specifically with our Laramie-based companies where there's some cool technology at the university that needs to just kind of get a little bit more commercialization before it's ready for somebody like us. Right? And and there's not really anything, you know, a lot of other states have programs to take, you know, university tech, you know, they're done with their NSF grant or whatever it is that professors do to make this technology what it is. But it's not ready for the commercial market or ready for for us to go invest in yet. So there's some gap funding, I think universities call that, but there's definitely something, there's an issue there that I think maybe you guys could could come in and help with. You know, another huge gap we have, I know you had, you had Mike or Matt come in and talk, but we don't have great service providers for startups in the state. You know, it's 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 kind of funny like when we, when we, when we get into, it's time to sign deal, you know, to get deal documents done with a company in the state, we're like, well, you need to find a startup lawyer and we already have Matt. So I don't know who to send it to. I mean, and it's starting to get a little better. There's a couple like pocket up, but but that's definitely a gap. And then when you go to, you know, just the random accountant down the block doesn't really necessarily know how to do accounting for startups and stuff like that. So there's this kind of gap of service providers that is something that, you know, if there were more of us, you know, I think they're they're they would probably be able to do that.
Hey, Jared, I might, I might stop you there.
Yeah, please do.
You know, I think that that point about the universities and the and the tech transfer and and sort of like this idea of commercializing tech or commercializing research that's that's done at at the University of Wyoming and maybe others. But I think that's definitely been a focus from what I've heard from President Seidel over the last couple of years. And so it might be a really good time to to bring Phil Philip in and have him provide a little bit of an intro and then talk a little bit about how the university fits in. And then I've got a a couple of questions and I know Philip has a hard stop at four. So I'm gonna, we'll we'll turn over to him for a second. Open, it looks like you might still be muted, Philip.
There we go. Sorry about that. Thanks a lot, Josh. I was just going to say Jared's probably forgotten more than I'll ever know about venture investing. But I can give you my, I give you my two cents. I'm at, as Josh said, I'm the Chief Investment Officer with the foundation. Assets are around $800 million. In private equity and venture, we're about at this point, 32 to 33% of the invested assets are invested in in those type of entities, spread out across a couple of different asset classes. But by and large, I mean, we've got over 100 private equity managers that includes venture capital. So a bunch of, a bunch of different entities, none of which for the most part that I'm aware of, have any substantial operations in Wyoming. Although you'll find that oftentimes some of the, actually, that's not true. Prime Uber's Labs has a couple of other principles in Jackson. But they're they're also distributed company that have people all over the United States, primarily on the West Coast, in and around Palo Alto. But but one thing it is absolutely apparent is there are a lot of GP type people, general partners that are living in Jackson Hole that work for significant VC funds. And we get introduced to them every now and again. So there is a presence in the state, but I'm, you know, I don't want to say unfortunately, but the reality is they're all in Jackson Hole for the most part, which seems at some point, oftentimes to be a separate country from the state. I mean, just to state the obvious. And so trying to get that idea flow and those professionals engaged at the university, for instance. And so trying to get that idea flow and, and those professionals engaged at the university, for instance, and in other parts of the, other parts of the state has been an uphill battle. And I applaud a lot of stuff that Jared's done and, and other people inside the state, Josh, they're trying to get some movement there. The good news is, is that, you know, this is a destination state for a lot of those type of, of executives. And so I think it's just over time, we're going to have more and more and more. But we really need to figure out a way to engage them, to get them involved in, in outside of just a tax advantage in the state, but actually, you know, contributing to the state. So I kind of does my personal soapbox. I'll step off now, but outside of that, this is a it's a tough business. Don't, we should not kid ourselves. What you guys are going to try to do is, is really hard. And but I, you know, I applaud the effort. The problem that you're going to face, I think, in my humble opinion, is that there is lots of need and demand for capital to do things. And there are few businesses that adequately need that required rate of return for your capital. And so either trying to find funds or companies that are, you know, post their initial funding that qualify for that is going to be really hard, but it's going to be, that's always true. But I think it's going to get even more true in the, in the short to immediate future, only because the amount of capital that's available out there is starting to dwindle. And certainly the cost of capital is going up every day. Today being no different than Friday and, and, and pretty much this entire year. So it, but the business goes in cycles. And I think I've, in my investment career, I've been through major cycles, including the, probably the first really big cycle was the PC cycle very early on and the, it kind of caught the end of that in the late eighties. And then the cellular telephony cycle, which was ginormous. And that went through the mid nineties. And then of course, computers, desktop computer cycle that occurred in the, in the middle nineties, leading into the internet. And then leading into software as a service, these SaaS companies that have attracted tons of venture capital. So these cycles, they overlap each other and they just keep happening. And, and right now we're probably, I'd say we're more into, into the digital asset side. There's a huge, there's a huge dichotomy that's happening right now. So there was a good idea called Bitcoin. And then everyone tried to come up with a better idea called, you name it, any of these other different digital currencies out there. Probably the single biggest feature that would be obviously Ethereum, because it came with a, a language called solidity that allowed you to write smart contracts. So we've had these different waves of investment that's crashing right now. That it's hard to, hard to gather how big that wave crash is going to be. Bitcoin itself, I'm absolutely certain that just continues to chug on every 10 minutes. They're going to write. You know, they're going to write to the, to the ledger and it just keeps going. But some of the entities that were loaning out Bitcoin, and certainly a lot of the smart contracts and DeFi and all that stuff. It is, it's going to come under the microscope even more so than it is today going forward. And there's capital that is looking for exits out of that business. And so that's just what, you know, everything appeared rosy three years ago to those entities that were trying to fund those businesses. And now they're, you know, there's a lot of panic out there. So this is going to create opportunities and Wyoming is a friendly state to that. And that's why I mentioned it. That I, I think that it is an investable concept and I do think the state is going to have a major role to play in it going forward. But it's going to be bloody. But from that, there's going to be some opportunities. So so there's, there's definitely something to, to remain positive about, absolutely positive about, because that's coming. But the, the one thing that I would say, having come from California, moving back to Wyoming, there really is a Darth of entrepreneurial activity in the state outside of leisure and entertainment. So call it resorts, that kind of thing. There's a little bit in, in, in medical devices that we've seen. There's not a lot in hard product technology, if any. I mean, a little bit Jared, you probably know better than I, but you know, we, we just really lack in that. And oftentimes a lack of hard product, when I'm saying like semiconductor and, and device manufacturing. Those are generally people intensive businesses where software is not. And so I, my own personal thought is, and I, again, Jared may disagree with you on this, but I think we, we really need to do is establish the state as a place where we can attract those hard product technologists, so they can move their companies here and manufacture here. And that is a, that's a tall order because number one, our population is so small. I mean, Casper is great, middle of state. It's got a bunch of entrepreneurs in Casper. And it's got recreational opportunities. It's got the state tax situation. I mean, it's got everything you would want, it just isn't big enough for a lot of these companies that when they look to locate, you know, significant size. And once we get one company, I think we can knock down more. But once we get one of those, then I think that's really when your venture capital potential can start to blossom because there are spin outs out of these bigger companies. They aren't the venture capital opportunity, but they create them. At least that's been my experience. And so, I mean, just think about, just think about companies that have created other companies, think of Micron computers, you know, coming out of Boise, GR Simplot. So that, that would, that's, that's kind of the nirvana. To the extent that, you know, the foundation can help that, you know, we're always, always looking to do, you know, something like that by the state. Now Josh and Jared both mentioned, there is some interesting technology that's being done in, in university, no doubt about it, in our engineering schools. We don't have a medical school, so that kind of limits. I mean, when you look at a lot of, of, of venture activity, a lot of it's just the biosciences. And we just don't have that medical school at present that has all those people. Now we have them close by in Colorado, but we don't have it here. So it's, it, that is somewhat of, that's somewhat of a wind in our face, but we certainly have some solid mechanical electrical engineering. And I think the whole idea that, that President Seidel is bringing into the university, you know, some center of computing and, and the like, I think ultimately will pay dividends. So I'm, I'm pretty, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty positive on what's happening inside the university, because I think, and, and Josh would, I'm sure has told you guys this, but I think there's a realization that there's an opportunity and we just need to figure out a way to fund it, but to fund it correctly. The worst thing we could do is do something that is destined for failure. So we have to make sure that when we do it, it's, it's going to be sustainable. Meaning that a new governor comes in or a new president comes in or whatever, that it doesn't lose its focus or lose its, its funding. And, and more importantly, it's, it's supporters. So that's, I, I feel pretty good about that. That I think the right people are coming in place to where that can happen. So so yeah, outside of that, you know, we've had a minimum, not a minimum, but kind of a typical check size is around five million bucks when we invest in a fund. We've done some direct investments. We led the angel round for Avanti Bank, which is now called Custodia, which is making lots of waves in the digital asset custody space. And that's been exciting. We're, you know, fortunate to have someone like Caitlin Long that has moved back to state and brought all of her experience from Wall Street. And she's been kind of a lone voice out there in the, in, in the custody side about why you should not lend Bitcoin out. It's not, it's not an asset that's designed to be rehypothecated. Nor any of these other digital assets, because they are way too volatile. And so she's been impressed, been in social media, you know, print, everything, just warning against this. And now we're seeing the result of it and it's so I think ultimately that probably will make us look a little bit better. Cause I think the perception amongst, especially some people in Wyoming, they think that we're the wild west, when in actuality we're actually one of the more conservative, a fully reserved bank that can custody digital assets and, and not lend them out and, and not make loans based on that, on that capital. So we're not a fractional reserve bank. But a fully reserved bank. So yeah, I think that that picture is going to become clear and clear over time. And I think that can only help the state. So our fingers are crossed that, that the Fed recognizes that as well too, and grants us a master agreement, which in which case I, you know, we would be, we'd be in a really interesting point or a really interesting position to provide custody, qualified custodian to very, very large financial institutions, like the largest out there. When you think about in, in the financial service industry and, and they're all watching us. So that could be a good, that could be a nice little, that could be a nice little benefit for the state. But there's a lot of, there's a lot of twists in the road between here and there. And there's still a lot of risk, especially from a regulatory level and, and just an overall market level. So that's, that's kind of my, my view on things at this point.
Yeah. Hey, hey Philip, let's, and this will be a question, I think for, for both of you. I'm, I'm really intrigued and I think it's, it's something that we, we as a, as a, as a board and an entity want to really kind of, how do we create the seed crystal that allows other things to happen organically, right? So how do we make an investment with something like our BRC funds, for example, to bring in a company or to help a company grow that will then spawn other entrepreneurial ventures that then could be, you know, could really become funded by some of the entities that you represent or that, that that we are trying to kind of create in the state. And I think that's a really, that's a really important component. You mentioned, you mentioned Micron and Boise as sort of like the, the, the beginning of the tech in, in Boise. And, and I think there are a number of, of organizations that you, that we could all point to in various states. But it feels like, it feels like Wyoming really hasn't had that yet. And so I look at it and I think this is something for our board to think about. How do we make investments with our normal, the quote unquote, normal investments like BRC and large loan and things like that? That could instigate more of that ecosystem development or, or spawn that ecosystem development. And, and so I guess the question that I have for you after that long-winded intro is as we do that, because that's part of our goal, and you see entrepreneurs spin out of that, what are the things that you look for? That you think make them high quality investments? And what are the things that make you shy away? So if I was in an entrepreneur watching right now, and I'm, I get to hear from, from a couple of people who run funds, what makes you attracted to, to those entrepreneurs for investment and what it makes you maybe shy away? And, and Jared, I'll let you go first and then, then Philip will jump over to you. Oh, you're, I think you're muted still, Jared.
So you asked like four questions. I don't know which one you want me to answer.
You could pick, well, I pick whichever one you have the best answer for.
So, so you, you, you teed that off talking about how you guys can use your BRC funds and stuff like that to, to maybe spawn that. And I honestly don't have great answers to that. I think you, you and other, others on this call have, I've heard me say, I think recruiting businesses is a waste of time. And, and if you look at, if you look at those tent pole companies is the word that, you know, economic developers use them like, like Micron and Boise or Dell and Austin. They're all homegrown, right? Those are, those are companies. It's not like they were recruited to Boise or recruited to, to Austin, right? So, you know, my, my view for this is, this is, it's, you gotta play the long game. And, and you gotta find some stuff that, that you go invest in and, and one or two of those grows in five or 10 years, where, where they become that tent pole. And, you know, it's, it's definitely, you know, in, in my world, you know, it's, it's not that you can take one bet and that's going to go work, right? You gotta take like 30 bets and hopefully one of them work, right? In, in that whole world. But, but I'll answer your last question, because I have more thoughts on that. And, and, and that's, you know, what are the kind of entrepreneurs that we're looking for to, to, to invest in? And, and it really is kind of a chicken to the egg problem. You know, I, I joke and then this sounds arrogant, but it's not. But it would not be hard for me to go get a bunch of venture capital money tomorrow, right? Cause I've already made investors money and I've done it a couple of times. Like, you know, so, so that's kind of the, the easy way, but, but you need to figure out a way that, that we can have just like a, a, a volume of these. So the people fail at their first little startup, leaving the university or something like that. You know, I, I love it when we see an investment and he's like, and, and they, they always try to try to hide it. And they're like, oh, I had that startup and I failed over there. Like that's great. Right? Cause then all the, all the mistakes you already made, I don't have to pay to make those mistakes again. Right? So, so how you get people to just try stuff. And I, I think that's things that like the, the university incubators can do and things like that. And, and people that are the number two or number three at a, at a, at another company that, that go start their own, like how you, how you spur those. Those are the kind of people that I'm, I'm looking for and, and the kind of skills that I'm hoping that, that they have. I, I, you know, not, not that the education piece is something that you guys can, can tackle either, but I, I really like investing in technical founders that can, you know, I, I want a founder who's either can sell or can build product. And you run into a lot of them that are neither. And, you know, I've learned the hard way that that's pretty hard to bridge to, to gap.
So, so battle scars, right? And understanding what may not work and having them already have screwed those up. So they don't have to screw them up with your money. That's, that's an attractive thing. And then somebody who can sell or, or has the technical chops to make, to build something. Okay. Cool. Philip, how about you? What, what are things that, that make, as you look at an investment, what makes that attractive? Or, or a founder or an entity that, that you find attractive in, in this space?
Well, I'll answer that, that question second. I guess the first thing and, and Jared mentioned it, but trying to attract business to state, it has been a waste of time, it seems. And one of the reasons for that is because we're competing with Texas and other states like that, that, you know, are willing to give all kinds of of freebies and goodies for them to get there. We don't have, and Texas doesn't have this either. So, so it's not like they, they can use tax abatements and things like that, but they probably do have some development hurdles that they can lower for companies to relocate. And they've been super successful getting those companies to go there. But there's other reasons. There's University of Texas and that entire huge, in Texas A&amp;M. I mean, all the universities are. And so Texas has got, clearly I hate having to compete with Texas to get, because we have companies come to us and say, hey, we want to locate some light manufacturing. Who do we talk to in the state? And I've put, you know, them in touch with people in the state. But generally speaking, we, we haven't had a lot to give outside of, you know, you get to move to the state where, you know, you get anywhere you need to go and in 10 minutes in any town that you're going to live in. And your kids can get a great education and you don't have to do private schools. Man, all of that stuff that trust me is really, really important and only getting more important. You watch California is going to continue to lose companies and people. Having spent my entire career out in, you know, in the Bay area, it's not getting better. It's getting worse. And so there's opportunity there, but the problem is we've got to figure out if we really are willing to buy our way into that business. And I'm not advocating that we do, but that's what it's going to take. So one company in particular from one of, it's one of the prime movers companies. It's called Halo. Halo came up with this technology. The guy that started it is a PhD student in Stanford and he's actually three PhDs, I think is what he has, because in his spare time, he got another PhD while he was working on this company. But he came up with a, a way to use lasers and not to slice it when you think of like a laser, but they actually fracture ingots of either silicon or, or silicon carbide, but the substrate that you would then use to make a sub, a semiconductor wafer that you would make your integrated circuit on top of. Now, why is that important, right? Instead of cutting it with a saw, a wire, a really thin wire coated with diamond dust to try to create all those wafers. Cause actually what a silicon ingot looks like, it's about that tall. And it can be eight inches, it can be 11 inches. I mean, Jared, I, what, what's the, are, are they, are they now 13 inch wafers? I mean, it might be at this point. So when I first started in the business, it was four, uh, four inches. Then I went to six, went to eight, 11. And, and it's probably in the teens now. So the bigger the wafer, the more chips you can put on it. So they would to cut these things with these wire saws. Now think about that. When you cut something with a saw, there's vibration. There's all kinds of things that can lead to defects in that, in that wafer. So then you have to polish it to make it perfect, so that they can chemically, physically deposit chemicals on there to write the, to, to basically create the lines that they're, they're going to etch with, with, you know, create circuits. And so he came up with this technology to use lasers that would actually fracture it or, or cleave it. His technology, he can cleave diamonds. Imagine that. And he can cleave diamonds in really thin sheets. And so silicon carbide and, and all this other stuff is really simple, but he's just started up and they're rolling out their first line. It's going to save semiconductor manufacturers tons of money. Because it, when you cut something like that, you can create micro fractures in the, in the substrate. So without having any micro fractures to worry about and not have to polish it nearly as much, because it's a clean cut, it's a cleave. You know, it's just, this business is going to grow like crazy. And so they're looking for light manufacturing. But they needed a special type of, of building. They needed a tall building that, that had to meet some type of physical criterias. In addition to that, it needed to be fairly, you know, not a clean room, but it had to have those type of characteristics. And so they reached out to us and we put them in contact, but there just isn't anything like that in Wyoming. So they'd have to build it on their own. So it's kind of a chicken and the egg. So it's kind of a chicken and the egg. Now, if you wanted a company like that, which I'm pretty certain is probably going to be one of the single largest investments that Prime Movers ever made. Because there's no one else that can do what they're doing right now. They probably have a three to five year head start. And so when you think about the, the cost benefit that they bring to a, a big semiconductor manufacturer, I mean, it's a lot. And so these machines are going to propagate like crazy. So there's a lot of opportunity, but in order to get them to come here, we would have had to have done something. We'd had to expend capital, which is really hard to do. Right? Because you have too many constituents to say, what are we doing? Why, why are we paying people to come here? Well, because we have to, to get started. And so anyway, that's just, that's one, that's one thing that I would say, um, we have to answer. Are we willing to do something like that for the companies, um, that we really believe could um, be asymmetric return potentials like Jared's talking about? Because you need, only need a couple of them and it makes everything, it covers up all your sins. So there's that. But one thing we look for when we invest in, in, in these companies is that first of all, as a rule, I only invest in people. I don't invest in companies. I don't invest in technologies. I invest in people that manage or create or propagate those technologies. That's just, that's the way it's always been for me. You know, I had plenty of opportunities to invest in compact computer, but I chose Dell because I started buying computers from Michael Dell when he was in PC Limited, just out of the dorm room before it ever became Dell Computer. And getting, don't know him really early in my career. I realized right away, he was so pragmatic. So pragmatic that it's like, hi, I just couldn't imagine how we're going to lose. Now they have lots of places along the way, like when their laptops were catching on fire when they were using their foreign currency uh, desk as a profit center. I mean, they did a bunch of stuff that was kind of dumb early in the group because he didn't surround himself with really good people. But Michael himself was really, really, really good. And eventually he got more tougher to join him and he got, um, you know, Andy Harzlin to join him who lives in Jackson, but he was, uh, you know, one of the original Apple guys. And so, or Eric Harzlin, not Andy. But, um, the nature is that when you identify these people, then I don't even, Josh, I don't know how to tell you, but something just for me, it just clicks. You know, one co-investment I did with Jared, just a personal investment of mine, and then they invested is Adisa, is a kid that moved to Jackson Hole when we were living there, um, and was a quarterback on the football team. And my son was quarterback. So, but my son was two years younger. So I got to know him and it's, um, just a Grayson Buckingham, a, a great kid. He went to school at, um, actually went back east and got a couple of degrees, but he did come back to university and get his law degree here and, and then started a mineral disaggregation company out of, out of college that we co-invested with. And you know, even though he'd never started a business, so he had nothing that he'd failed at yet. So it was a really risky investment that we made. But, um, knowing him as well as I did, I thought, yeah, I would probably trust him with capital because he's never going to give up. Which is, that's for me, it's a big deal. You, you can't invest in people to give up easily. You just can't. And so anyway, they struggled, struggled, struggled through COVID and everything. And now it looks like they're starting to get some traction. So maybe across our fingers, that will be a, and it's a Casper company. So I, I would really like to see these guys do well. Not because I have an investment, because I want to see them do well. I want to see, because it'll be good for the state, be good for Breakthrough 307. So anyway, that's kind of, that's really what, what Josh, for me, you know, total available market. Yeah, that's really important. Because that creates an asymmetric return potential. But I mean, really it's just the people and, and, um, you know, I've been burned by people too. So you know, it's just, yeah.
Well, maybe, maybe what we could do now is, is open this up to board members who might have some questions about, you know, because as we, as we embark upon this, it's going to be something that we're going to be thinking about more and relying on expertise from folks like you. So, um, board, I, I'd just like to open it up to you to, to, uh, to ask questions of, of Jared and Phillip and see if we can keep the dialogue going.
Hey guys, I do have a heart stop. So in three minutes. So if you got one, one that's burning, hit it now. If I gotta jump.
Okay. I'll ask a simple one, just to get it rolling. So the two of you operating in this space, are you excited about us doing this? Do you see potential? Do you feel like this is a role the state of Wyoming and the Business Council can help fill in all the holes that are out there?
Well, I, I can answer that straight up. I think yes, absolutely. I think that, I think that there's, um, you know, small funds and, and, um, entrepreneurs that are kind of at that stage where they need, you know, something is past the seed round or past the angel round. Um, I think that they, you could be very helpful to the state's, um, ecosystem for this. I mean, it's a small ecosystem. It really is. So your impact could be measurable. And so, um, yeah, I'm, yeah, I, yeah, I do. I really believe that.
Well, and this feels like to us, the only way that we can jumpstart it and get it going.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I've, it's, it's been somewhat frustrating since I've moved back because I'm, I'm a member of the instant gratification society. I, I expect stuff that's, we're just going to get it done, right? And it, it doesn't really work that way, especially, um, with, with states and, and, um, you know, government entities, school. My gosh, education moves slowly. They, we call it the, the wheels of education turn slowly. Um, so I think that, I think that you guys, um, you know, hopefully we'll be able to um, mitigate some of that. Um, but it, it doesn't mean that you should, you're, you're going to have to be very careful how you allocate your money and, and make sure that you, um, have good advisors and, and if, you know, ask me, I'd be very happy to give you my two cents for what it's worth. And I'm sure Jared would too. But I mean, your ability to, to, to get a, a bit more substance into the state and, and this would be great. I mean, um, I mean, Jared, you, you know, more than I, because you're actually in this business trying to do it. So, um,
Yeah, I mean, a- and actually I guess if anyone has another, I'll come back to that. If anyone has another question for Phillip.
Yeah, because I am jumping right, like, go ahead, but.
Phillip, thank you very much for, for joining. We, we really appreciate it and we will definitely take you up on your offer.
Yep. Great. Okay. Good luck, guys. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
So to answer your question, Kim, uh, like, so I'm super excited about you, you, you doing this, but I almost feel like you have to. Um, realize all the other states are getting this money too, right? And, um, we're already in a situation, um, that, you know, other states, Colorado, for example, has some stuff that we don't have, right? And, you know, I never say this to an entrepreneur, but sometimes you're like, dude, this, this, maybe you should take this business to Fort Collins because there's more tools down there than we have here. Right? Um, and, and, and I am just, you know, just kind of like keeping track of like startup Twitter, right? I mean, there's a whole bunch of other states that are doing this too. And i- it's, it's going to put us in a disadvantage if there isn't some sort of venture funding coming out of this SSBCI money. Like forty other states are going to do.
All right. It looks like Aaron has a question for you. Thanks for that, Jared.
Yeah. Jared, so let's follow up on that just a little bit, right? And talk about what some of the other states have as well as, can you talk a little bit about mentorship and support systems? Because we know that money is only part of the, of the piece of this, right? It's, you know, what does that look like from a breakthrough 307 point? When you guys do an investment in terms of the support that happens afterwards? And what do you think as we're thinking about deploying these dollars? We also need to be focused on in tandem of just not like, oh, here's some money. But what, what network do we have to make sure that we're responsibly building in order to be able to get the success that we need to get this off the ground, right?
Yeah. So two questions there and I'll try to answer both of them. Um, so the states that I'm most familiar with are Tennessee, Colorado. Um, and they both have different, different types of programs. Um, Tennessee has a, has a very interesting ventures type, type fund that they use with their, they built with their SSBCI funds the first time around. You know, these came around whenever that was 10 years ago. And, and Colorado has what they had, they call their advanced industries program. Um, and both of those, um, essentially like for angel investments are like matching money, right? So if, if they need to, if they need to get, get $250,000, they get $200 from us and $200 from the state. Um, which, which is not dissimilar to, I think some of the stuff you guys are kind of kicking around, kicking around anyway. But, um, you know, it, it makes that slog of fundraising shorter for entrepreneurs. So they can start going to build the, the company, right? Which kind of leads you to, to your next question, um, you know, so if we can get fundraising shorter, so they don't have to spend half a year fundraising for, um, for, for their money, then we need to make sure that they're successful, right? So after they have the money, we make sure it's successful. And I, I would say we do an okay job of that, uh, at, at breakthrough, you know? So we, we al- we almost always take a board seat, you know, and, and oftentimes when we say we're going to take a board seat, the response is, oh, that means we have to set up a board. Right? Because we're the first money in. Um, so we kind of get that really early like governance and all that kind of stuff. So, so we, we've gotten pretty good at that. Um, there is a, a, a pretty good un, um, uncoordinated mentorship network in the state. You know, I kind of just call it the Wyoming network because we're not that, there's not that many of us. Um, where if they, you know, if they take an investment from us, that kind of gets them hooked into, to me and Charles and, and the 25 or 30 of our, of our investors and people. And actually Phillip didn't mention it, but the foundation is a, is an investor in our second fund. Um, so they come to all of our meetings and they get those too. So we can kind of connect them to what they, wh- what they potentially need. But, uh, what's really, really difficult here, and it kind of goes back to something we were talking about 30 minutes ago, where we don't have like those big tent pole companies, right? So like, we've had two or three, uh, like video gaming, like gaming companies come to us. And I don't know anybody in that industry and nobody in our investment board knows anybody in the industry and nobody in Laramie knows anybody in the industry. And we're kind of like, I don't know how to help you. So i- i- it's, and it becomes, it becomes an investment decision for us. Or we're like, look, we could invent, we could, this guy needs the money. We could invest in it. Maybe it's a good business and the gaming industry is blowing up, right? So it's a market we'd like to get into, but we, we're, we're just dumb money then, right? So, so that becomes a, 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 an issue for us. Now I've been banging on the university for a decade now, I feel like on this, because I guarantee there's a hundred alumni of the university that go work, that work for EA Sports or some gaming and, and I should be able to tap into that. I don't, I don't have any method to be able to tap into that. But that, that's such an example of one of those ones where like, if there's a tech or, or some industry that looks interesting, but nobody in our investment group knows anything about it, it makes us a way harder for us to invest. And it also makes it, you know, if we, if I go back to how I started, one of our goals is to be the first money in, to do the due diligence and all that kind of stuff. If we don't know anything about it, we, we do a really bad job at that too. So, you know, that, that's, that's, you know, if I look at gaps that, you know, you guys potentially figure out how to fill, that's one of them. Is how can we kind of get the, the breadth of, of knowledge of people who could help in different industries? And there's a lot of people out there, you know, people who, even people who grew up here, they live in Connecticut, right? But if you call, if you, if you somehow knew them and you call them and say, hey, there's this little Wyoming company, you grew up here, you want to help, most of them will. But I don't know how to make that happen. There's probably some guy in Jackson that's an investor in a video game company. Um, I don't know, I don't know what her name is, but she's probably there, right? So. Um, and then the, on the, on the support side, you know, and, and the, I'm going to, I'm going to say support and there's also kind of like, um, maybe like, like, like deal logistics that I think there's something you guys could help with. Um, you know, lawyers are expensive, right? And, and, and the last thing we want to do is write a check for a hundred grand and 20 of it goes into Matt's pocket, right? Matt's a friend of mine, but still I don't, I, 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 it doesn't need to go to the lawyers. And I think there's some stuff there like, you know, Y Combinator, which is like one of the biggest accelerators in the world and, and, uh, in California. They just like open source their deal docs. They're like, here's how we do investments and you can go to the website and you can download it, right? So you don't have to go to a lawyer. We're just going to use the, the Y sum, the Y Combinator safe agreement. And I wonder if there's something, some stuff around there that maybe you guys could like hire someone like Matt to go put some deal locks together. Here's what a, here's what a fair on both sides kind of deal lock looks like. You guys can save some money on, on lawyers or something like that. I think there's maybe some, some ways to make these deals go faster and cleaner for Wyoming entrepreneurs. Um, as opposed to having to, having to do that and, and, and hire people. Yeah, I guess I answered your question, Aaron, maybe, hopefully.
No, I, I, yes, absolutely. So.
I have till 4:30, so I'm ha- I'm happy to hang out, but you don't have more questions.
I, I would bet that spawned a few. If not, I've, I've got.
I, I do have one other thing I wrote down when I was preparing for this. I want to make sure I, I passed along, if you don't mind. So I know on, on one of your charts, uh, Josh, you said you were hoping to maybe invest in six to seven funds or seven to eight funds or something like that. The one ask I would ask of you guys, if you could, if, if you could use your funding to, to kind of force this, make those funds have some presence in the state. Cause like, I know we, we all keep talking about, we need the, you know, we, we need to build the entrepreneurs, but we also need to build up the investment side too, right? And there's, yeah, maybe there's some with some 22 county license plates, but there's really no venture capitalists in the state, right? Um, and it'd be cool if you could kind of be like, hey, you guys can, we'll, we'll, we'll help, you know, we'll, we'll bring you into our fund to funds, but you gotta have a body in the state. Right? So that, and I don't know if you can make that work or whatever, but if we had two little young, you know, aspiring venture capitalists traveling around the state, going to all the impact pitch events and just being here. Eventually one of them would grow into something and they're going to go make their own fund and, and then that's what happens. But we don't have any of those. So we're not building up those. Um, there's also something, you know, i- i- if there're going to be more funds like ours that are angels, that's great, but there's like an angel education piece that probably needs that, needs to be around this. And I don't know if that's something you need to take up or we need to have the community colleges or something do that. But, you know, we got kind of lucky because, you know, the vast majority of our investors are Casper. So there's a bunch of like risk-taking oilmen around and stuff like that. So they're kind of used to taking risks and losing some of their money and not, or not, or whatever. But, um, being an angel investor is a little different, right? And there are some like, you know, online classes and stuff like that, but, but, but there's something there that if, if we're going to have a couple more angel funds, which hopefully this, this spurs that. It would be nice if there was like a evening course or something like, you know, three hours or something like that, that you could have bring the Angel Capital Association in or something. And, and kind of, here's what it means to be an angel investor and here's what it, here's what happens. And, you know, the, the, the real thing, and you know, Phil, uh, alluded to this, you know, and I've been saying this since my days back on Governor Means and Dow thing is, you know, we are, we are hunters in Wyoming. We're not farmers. Right? And, 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 and we, you know, have a kind of instant gratification. We want to go ahead and bring the elk in tomorrow, right? Not like water it a while and then I get some corn in six months, right? And, and, and startup investing is farming. A- and it's, it takes a little bit of a cultural mindset shift change to do that. And I think there's probably something we could do there from an education kind of perspective to help that. And, and that's something you guys as a board are going to have to deal with too, right? Cause, because this is, you know, there's, this take, these take a long time, you know, and there's failures. And you kind of have to have that portfolio look, right? You know, if I look at our 14 investments, two of them have completely failed, right? They're, I don't even know, like you can go to their website and you get 404, right? I mean, they're, they're done. Um, you know, and we've got two of them that have succeeded and then the rest of them are somewhere in between. It's probably going to take six or seven years before we know wh- wh- where they are, right? But, but, but if you look kind of the portfolio perspective, we think we're doing pretty good, right? So there's kind of some of that mindset change that maybe you guys could figure out how to, how to help there. But the real thing is if you're going to partner with some funds, make sure they're here, make sure they have a body in the ground. In the state, because we need to grow that skillset here too, because it just isn't here.
That's super helpful. And, and not to disappoint, Kathy Tomasi has a question. She always has really good questions and I was worried, I was worried that maybe it wasn't the real Kathy Tomasi because we hadn't asked a question yet.
Hi Jared. I, I do, and these are just some, I do have a couple of questions, but they're just basic questions. Like how many potential entrepreneurs do you see come through like in a year for Impact 307?
Breakthrough.
And do you, what percentage do you turn down? What percentage do you fund? And just, and how much time does it take as an individual to run through these?
Yeah. No, so th- th- that's a great question. And it allows me to kind of give some props to how we've managed our second fund. So once we started our second fund, Advanced Casper, the, um, the economic development folks here, they got a grant from the EDA and we were able to hire someone. Maybe you guys have all met Goose Gostrey. So he kind of spends maybe half his time or somewhere in there helping us do this. Because the first time around it was all volunteers and we were really, really, at the very beginning, we were really, really bad at feel that kind of getting filtering. So we wound up talking to way too many people, right? And the, I mean, we need more T-shirt shops in, in the state, right? But we're not investing in T-shirt shops, but we had to like have that meeting and say no, right? Um, so we've done a little bit better job of filtering down, like, you know, we have like an online application process. And a lot of people, like 80% of the people that go to the online application, don't complete it. So they kind of self-filter, right? They're like, oh, and we basically, you know, question three is like, can you get a bank loan? And if you answer yes, we're not giving you any money, right? Like, like if, if, if a bank will give you a loan, do not take expensive money from me because you should go to a bank, right? So like, there's kind of some stuff we've tried to do to, to self-filter. Um, I think if you kind of get through all of that, you make an application, we probably, uh, take a deep look at 15%. Fifteen percent of the ones that start, you know, that that come in. Probably ten percent we actually have come pitch us. Um, and then we invest in. Probably, it's probably uh. Sixty-five percent of the ones that actually make it to pitch, we wind up investing in.
Okay. Thanks.
So so I mean, it's hundreds at the beginning, but we we have maybe a pitch a month is probably or a pitch every other month is probably what. The ones that we finally can figure out, yeah, there's something here, you know, that's something we can help, you actually do need the money.
Okay, thank you.
And and just that's actually slowed down, interestingly, over the last few, over the last few years. I mean, if you look at like nationwide statistics, like entrepreneurship's way up, lots of people quit their jobs in COVID and decided to start their own bit, start a business. Um, but we're seeing less deals, and I I think there's a handful of reasons for it. One of them, I think, is because it's actually a little easier to get money from out of state now. So I think they don't want, like, it used to be had to come to us because we were like the only game in town. Um, and I think you see some people that are raising some money elsewhere, which is a great thing. So I'm not like. Disparaging of of that at all. And and there was a little bit of a glut there for a while, you know, like during twenty twentyish, twenty one, you know, the university didn't do. Quite as many of these startup challenges and all that kind of stuff, because it because of COVID, and, you know, those are, you know, two years later is when they want to come to us. And there wasn't any two years ago, right? So it's it's a little bit of a time lag of some of that, but it seems to be picking up just as of as of late. And there's some other things you can't fix too, like, you know, even if you have a like a one-man startup and you try to go hire someone, it's really hard right now, right? And and getting tech talents really hard, and things are like, things are more expensive, and there's a whole bunch of other kind of stuff that's going on that you can read the news. But uh, it's seems to be picking up, but that's a long way of answering your question of. It it ten percent is of the ones we that ever start, do we ever fund or less?
Good, thank you.
Jared, do you want to talk just a little bit? I mean. We've had some conversations that Wyoming's a little bit late to this game, but the upside to that is maybe we can learn from others who have already. Played in this pool for a while and maybe do it a little bit. Better. Um, on our go around. Do you have in working with some of the other states recommendations for things that we should make sure we have lessons learned from some of them and try not to live through twice?
Yeah, good question. I don't I don't think I have great answers um to any of that uh. What do I have? Um, you know, there's definitely some, and and we've we've actually run into this accidentally with some of those Kickstarter grants, but. You can kind of read uh. You can read some horror stories on exit of what some what what has happened on some of these, and what I mean on exit, like, let's say we invest in a company. And the state comes in, and then five years from now they get bought, and there wind up being some weird kind of poison pills in the state in the state contracts and all that kind of stuff. And especially a company that gets bought by an out-of-state company, which the reality is. All of our companies are gonna get bought by out-of-state companies, right? Um, and I think we we need to be careful that, you know, that should be a. A joyous occasion, and that should be good when that happens, and we need to make sure that we're not. We're we're not like kind of putting some poison pills in our contracts with the state venture funds and stuff like that. That uh, that don't uh, that don't allow that to successfully happen. Um, and I think I think Mississippi or Alabama, one of those had some really bad things happen about ten years ago with. I think they used their SSBCI funds actually, and it kind of it kind of backfired there. Um. I I I think there's there's also, you know, uh, you 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 can see some kind of. Lessons learned of what exactly, you know, defining upfront exactly what you want to invest in, right? And I think I think that's something that that we had to learn as well, is we had to be very, very explicit of like, you know, we're looking for things that are potential high growth. And are are going to be, you know, you know, gonna employ a bunch of people, but we're looking, we're looking for a return on our investment, you know. That, you know, Josh mentioned the kind of companies that you're investing in, we're not, we're not interested in if 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 we ask you, you know, are you gonna? You know, you're gonna try to build this company and have it forever, you're gonna sell it, you say I'm gonna build it forever, we're we're out. Because whenever we get our money back, right? So I think it's it's very, you're being very explicit, like, these are the kind of businesses we want to be in, and I think specifically when you start talking about state funds or. You know, government funds, you know, it 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 needs to, you need to define the box really tightly, so you don't get everybody else trying to come in and saying. It's this is this is for me, for me as well, and I think that that probably is is one of the things Kathy was was alluding to is. You know, we can't have literally everybody in the state knocking on the door. So how do we, how do we define this well? So it so it uh, happens. The other thing, and I don't know if you can fix this, but but we've run into two, but. There's nothing worse than having a program like this. Move so slow that it holds up the deal. Right? So, you know, a lot of these things, you know, they're they're thirty, maybe forty-five day kind of turnarounds, right? You know, and there are, I don't know. Will will the Attorney General return your call in forty-five days? Maybe, probably Josh's, but not mine, right? So um, I mean, you you need to you need to structure this, and that's why I think going to the fund of funds makes a lot more sense, right? Because that because then you've you've allocated it to the fund, and then the fund can do all the contracting, all that kind of stuff, but. Um, you know, it it would be, it would be bad, and I think you you've seen this happen in other states where the state's so slow that it slows up the whole, it slows up the whole deal. Off the top of my head, those are kind of some of the things I think we could make sure we can avoid.
Perfect.
Yeah, that's that's super good advice, Jared, and I think that's the part where. You know, when we think about, these are federal funds. We may, you know, we'll build some rules around it, and how do how do we structure those rules so that we have the ability to move fast? Or that we have the flexibility to do what we need to? Um, I think that's that's huge uh for us to know. So thank you for that. Let's see, so let's let's do this. It looks like um. Looks like board members have had a chance. To uh. To chat a little bit, and now I'm gonna go to the question and answer from the public. Oh, wait, Aaron.
No, I was just gonna say we have one on there that would be, I think, the good one to take, so.
Yeah, and and so maybe, maybe uh, this one's looks like it's more of a Business Council one, but Jared, I'll I'll let you weigh on it. Uh, as well, I think you talked about it a little bit in generalities by saying, let's be specific about what you're gonna invest in and how you're gonna invest, so you don't have. Everybody knocking on your door. Um, so so this gentleman asks, given the deteriorating economic situation in this country. Are there some ideas that will more likely be funded than others? Um. I think, you know, you mentioned, Jared, when we're talking about these kinds of funds, we are, we are looking at high-growth. Opportunities as well, right? High growth and an exit of some sort. That is the goal of these types of funds. Now, as a business council, we make a lot of different investments. Our BRC investments are typically not necessarily about that high-growth exit type of thing. Um, they can be, and they have been, but um, but when we look at it as a portfolio, these SSBCI funds will be for high-growth. Um, and and strong exit type of things. Um, this is just my take, but. I think we will, we will look at and will probably have to leverage the things that are our strengths. And so if you look at our strategic uh vision, it's all about activating new sectors by leveraging those things that we already know. Right? Not a whole lot different than we would make other investments, but uh, but Jared, um, maybe, you know, you're out there looking at things. What what are cer- certain things that you're looking at funding more than others right now?
Yeah, you know, i- i- it's gonna be an interesting time over the the next few years, but 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 there's probably going to be some really healthy things that. That lead our investment decisions as well, you know, there was a time not too long ago. Um, that uh, you know. Especially in pure kind of software tech plays, like, they didn't really have a revenue model, right? They were just trying to get a bunch of users and 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 something was gonna happen one day, and I I think it's gonna probably get be healthy for us. Um, that we're we're looking for companies that have, you know, you have a business plan, you're gonna eventually gonna make money, and that's how and that's how and that's how we're gonna have an exit. Um, so I I think there's probably gonna be a pivot towards more of those kind of rev- you know, there's a there's a path to revenue. Um, where it used to be like, I'm just gonna go get a bunch of users and and it's it's it'll work out then. Um, so I think I think that's that's one thing, and I also, you know, especially in the technology world, talent is really, really tight right now. And and I think there could be some, you know, that that could loosen up a little bit in the next in the next year or two. Which is gonna be healthy for the this industry, because if you're trying to do a, if you're trying to do a high-growth company, that means you gotta hire people. But if there's nobody to be hired, right? If you're spending all your time trying to trying to find two or three people to hire you, that's. Kind of not gonna jive with your high-growth goals. So I think there's some, there's some opportunity, I'm not saying like it's great, but it's there's definitely gonna be some opportunity. Maybe a little bit of pivot of the kind of companies that we fund.
I know. Um, so we we have. Two more questions from an individual um. For you, Jared, I'm gonna start with the, I I guess the first one, it might be, it depends, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask it anyway. What is the cost? What is your cost of capital?
It depends, yeah. Um, but uh, you know, we're not, we're not a huge, you know, we're not writing huge checks, right? So so a- and we are all individual investors who are putting our own money into it, right? So, you know, as as a fund, our cost of capital is almost nothing, but it kind of depends on our individual investors and stuff like that, how work, how that works out. And and our numbers are small enough that the cost of capitals that are that are significantly changing right now to have less of an impact than maybe you have. On your, you know, ten, twenty million dollar investments. Um, I I think I think is it the second question is the most significant difference among your successful investments in Wyoming?
Yep, yep.
Yeah, I I think there's probably two things, um, you know, one of them uh is is definitely the team, right? And and the the ability of the team, it doesn't mean they've had to have have done it before. Um, but like, they have a path towards understanding people. Um, and they're coachable. That's like a phrase we use all the time right now, because we definitely made some mistakes. Where, you know, if 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 someone thinks they know everything, they don't, right? And 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 we we do a lot of testing now on, you know, if it we love it when an entrepreneur comes in and be like, here's the three things I don't know. And I would love if you guys give me an investment, you can help me. Do A by A, B, and C, or put me in touch with someone who can do A, B, and C. Um, because that means when they make mistakes down the road, they're gonna pivot and they're eventually gonna figure it out. So that's probably two of the the biggest things um that we that we uh kind of measure. Then then there's another kind of metric that we maybe have done a bad job of, and we're trying to get better at is. Is it, is it the right time and is this the right place to do it? You know, there's still some technologies, you know, especially, um, you know, manufacturing and stuff like that. It's hard to do here. Right? And 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 we probably need to be a little bit smarter, like, if you're if you're. Building huge ass things that have to get shipped to the coasts, well, maybe just build those at the coasts, right? Like, there's there's some things that it would make sense for us to do here and make things that. That that might that might not. So we're trying to like focus on more things like, you know, we're not gonna. We're not gonna be like the next, you know, drug development, but maybe if there's some rural healthcare stuff, that's probably really, you know, Wyoming's a really good place for us to invest in that. So trying to make sure we're making bets that that it it makes sense here, and we feel like we can help with. Right? Because, you know, if there there's some technology and stuff that. They're not really something we any of us do, they're not really something that, you know, you don't have any customers around here, it's hard to for us to help.
Good. Well. I think I'll let my let my board. I'll give them one more opportunity to ask a question.
Thanks, because I'm really, really excited about you guys doing this. And if there's anything else I can do to help, please, please reach out, because. This is gonna. Help not only us and our fund, but I think, you know, I'm excited about entrepreneurs in Wyoming, and I think this is gonna help them, so.
Yep, yeah, well, thank you, and it it looks like it looks like everybody had a chance to answer questions. Your feedback and your your information today, Jared, that you shared, just to just can't, you know, it was super candid and and appropriate. And, you know, the funny thing is, is that you nailed a lot of the things that we were. We're, we are trying to scratch our head on, and we're trying to understand better, and so, you know, we really appreciate the time. Um, and the expertise, and and I think more than anything, Jared, we appreciate you, you know, sort of like. Stepping out there and doing something that hadn't been done and uh, and really, you know, creating something uh out of out of nothing. So we we really appreciate that, and we we see it as a way to to help. So hopefully we can be a good partner in this, and hopefully that we can make a big difference in the in the whole. Whole ecosystem and and take take what you've already started and and make it a whole lot better. So we just appreciate your time today and your your energy and and love of Wyoming. So thank you very much.
Thanks for your time, guys. Appreciate it.
Great, thank you so much. Great conversation today.